Yeah, probably someone didn't know. Yeah.
Well, go ahead and call this meeting to order. Specifically, the January 22nd, 2018 meeting. And the first item is closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Discussion concerning prospective businesses or industries, or the expansion of existing businesses or industries where no previous announcements has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And project number 2017-035.
Mr. Chair, I apologize. That one has been deferred to a later meeting due to my lack of information. So we will not be discussing that.
Okay. The other item would be consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, Montgomery County Regional Solid Waste Authority. And I would add the Peppers Ferry Water Authority as well.
Waste Water.
Waste Water Authority. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Whatever you want to do.
All right. I know we're trying to do this because we're going through board docs for the first time. So who is that? I heard Mary first and Daryl's the second.
It can be whatever Vicki wants it to be.
That's fine. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're in closed meeting. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. And folks, if you see us going a little bit slower than normal, we're working with board docs for the first time and we're going to work out some kinks this meeting. And we may have a few things that come up. And I apologize for the delays. All right. There was a motion and a second. And any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying this closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this certification is our Board's word that we're only talking about things that we're supposed to in closed meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is a moment of silence. And then after that, I will ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge.
Stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
And the next item on our agenda is recognition of delegate Joseph Yost. And I tell you what, why don't the Board go ahead and go on down and we'll meet Joseph down there. Go ahead and read the resolution. At a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Montgomery, Virginia, held on the 18th day of December, 2017 at 7:00 p.m. in the board chambers of Montgomery County Government Center. Whereas Joseph Yost was first elected to the Virginia House of Delegates as a representative for the 12th District in 2012. And whereas during his time in office, Joseph is a staunch advocate of public school system as well as higher education, and has been endorsed by the Virginia Education Association. Whereas Delegate Yost has made tremendous strides toward providing more comprehensive mental health services on college campuses. And his H.B. 1911 bill, which passed unanimously in 2017 mandates mental health training for resident advisors at Virginia public colleges. And whereas during his time representing the 12th District in the Virginia House of Delegates, Joseph Yost has learned the importance of bipartisan partnerships and has strived to work together across party lines in order to better serve and benefit all of the citizens. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County recognizes his years of service have been marked by dedication to the best interests of citizens he serves and his return to admiration and high regard of his fellow public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors extends a unanimous vote of appreciation and gratitude to Joseph for his outstanding public service and dedication with best wishes for continued success in all his future endeavors. Please, you want to give them up as well? Please, you want to give them up as well?
Still not giving it. The next is a company.
Ladies?
Does he want to use mine? I can share with him.
Good evening.
Hello.
We usually appreciate the opportunity to address the Board and try to give you a little background about what we're doing in cooperative extension. We always like to keep you informed on what's going on in our office. And typically, we use this time to just kind of share some highlights from our program. We did provide a report through the end of September that you received a while back. Just had a little trouble scheduling our time in front of you. And we have another report we want to give you this evening. But instead of giving you the highlights that you have at hand, we wanted to take a moment to share with you something that we have going on in this next year. And would appreciate any input that you have for us as we go through this process. But before I get to that, I just want to mention that we, in our extension office, have just finished our year-end reporting as faculty at Virginia Tech. So we have a Colen Elements Report. We spent a lot of time writing that report right at the beginning of January. And it's our faculty report. And as part of that, we have, it's an electronic report. We have lots of different things to report in terms of our presentations we've made, our professional activities, the funding that we've brought in for our programs, all of those kinds of things. But one of the things that our supervisors look at is our achievement section. So we have to have a synopsis of our year in 10,000 characters. And so that's one of the sections of our report. And we thought that might be useful for you so you could see everything we've done in short a synopsis that we could provide. 10,000 characters, hard to get it all in there. But we did provide that for you today. So it also just has some highlights of the entire year and what we've accomplished this year. And we're always happy to field any questions about our programs and what we're doing. And we're hoping in this next year to share some of the impacts that our programs have on the citizens of Montgomery County, where that's one of the things we have to do as well. We're charged to write impact statements about how our programs are influencing the youth and adult audiences that we serve. So we're passing those out, handing those to Vicki, and you guys will be receiving that. But one of the things we wanted to just share with you coming up this upcoming year, we're going to be doing, every five years, we are asked to do a situation analysis to help kind of drive our programming needs in the county. And so it's a year-long process. And just to give you a brief overview of it, but again, we're giving you a handout that describes it more in detail. And I have Dawn and Kelly with me today, our Family and Consumer Science Agent, Ag and Natural Resources Agent, and I'm the 4-H Agent for the county. And we'll work together as a team to do this with our Extension Leadership Council. So our Extension Leadership Council is an advisory group for cooperative extension. And we typically have a member of the Board of Supervisors on that committee as well. We don't presently have that and would love to have somebody that would be willing to work with us this year. We typically meet three to four times a year. And we'll be meeting to address our situation analysis this year. We always provide a nice little lunch for our Extension Leadership Council. But we try to get representatives from different areas of the community that can help us in this process. But there are four steps to the situation analysis process. The first thing we do is kind of organize for action. And we'll be doing that early this spring with our Extension Leadership Council in deciding how we're going to proceed with our needs assessment, which is our situation analysis. And then the second step is we just do a snapshot unit profile of our county, the demographics of the county, the health and well-being of our county, the education, what education is like in our county. We look at all of that and some of the statistics from various sources to get a snapshot of what our county currently looks like for us. And then the third step in the situation analysis process is that we assess the needs from a community and resident perspective. So we're going to be conducting, the Extension Leadership Council will decide which method we'll use, but we'll use something along the lines of surveys, or key informant interviews, or focus groups around the community. We'll decide what to do, how we're going to proceed with that as a group. And then finally, the last step of the process is to interpret all that data that we gathered from the year and try to determine what the needs of our community are and how extension can help address those needs. So where our resources can bear on the needs of our community. So we're going to be going through that whole process this year. And we appreciate any input from the Board of Supervisors as to, you know, where we might collect some of the data, who we should be talking to, and any interpretation of the data that we receive over the year. So one of the things extension is charged to do is to meet the needs of the community and to try to find out what those needs are and to plan our programming efforts around those needs. And so that's just a synopsis of what we're going to be doing in this next year. And we'll try to keep you posted on what we're finding and what those needs will be and then how our programs address those needs. So did I leave anything out? And if you guys have any questions for us, we're happy to answer those, either programming-wise or about situation analysis. In terms of 4-H, just real quickly, and they may each want to say a little something about their program, our 4-H program is pretty established and we do a lot of the same programs every year. And I talk about this frequently. And you hear me talk about junior 4-H camp. Those that have been on the Board for a while, pretty much every time I come here, it's a big one, school programs, after-school programs, clubs, et cetera. So those are still going strong, picking up a few extra school programs. Always happy to, you know, answer any questions you have about those 4-H needs. Okay? And then, I know you had a new program.
Thank you. It's good to see you guys. I see some new faces on the Board. So welcome to the Board. We're happy to have you and thank you for your service. I'm Kelly Scott. I represent Agriculture and Natural Resources. And just like Michelle's saying with 4-H, and I'm sure you'll hear from Dawn with Family and Consumer Sciences, that we, you know, once we start on a track record, these situational analysis are every five years. So you start doing something that's needs-based approach, and you kind of do that for five years until you do the situational analysis again. And so I'm coming up on my five-year mark. And as part of Agriculture and Natural Resources, as always, to help farmers with pesticide recertifications and pesticide trainings, we always offer well-water clinics, always available to the agriculture industry as a whole, and also offer consumer horticulture information through our Master Gardener Program. And so that's kind of a standard of what I would always tell you. That's the baseline of what I do. But one of the new programs that we've started just recently in 2017 and are continuing on is the New River Valley Food Access Network. And I was approached by the Community Foundation of the New River Valley to be a part of this conversation, to see how can we get more food on people's plates that need it in the county and really through across the planning district of the four counties of the New River Valley. And also, how can we improve the distribution of that food? So not only getting it to your house and to your plate, but how can we look at food hubs or aggregation facilities that can maybe service many farmers that are bringing many products together and then distributing those out? And so we've had six community conversations to date, and those have been ranged around the four counties of the New River Valley. And it's not just the Community Foundation and Cooperative Extension, but also the Family Nutrition Program and the Health District, the New River Valley Health District that's involved in this conversation. So it's been a huge learning experience, and we're just now getting to the point where we're ready to see some action and how we can move on some of the ideas that have been progressing over the past year or so. So I'm sure you'll hear more about that, but I wanted to at least introduce that to all of you. So if you've heard about it through your work or within the community, that you would have some relevance to know what that network was.
Good evening. I'll keep it short. I'll let you read and find out what are the things I do. But I want to point out, when you read my report, it will look a little different because you receive Montgomery and you receive Floyd, and that's okay. Because part of my time is spent in Floyd, and it's part of my time is spent in Montgomery. So that's why it will look a little bit different. But please, if you have any questions along the way, don't hesitate to give me a [inaudible]. Thanks.
Thank you. Let me just check Supervisor King, do you have any questions?
No.
Supervisor Fitchakowski?
No, but thank you for all you do. I'm sure it touches a lot of our citizens.
Thank you.
We're grateful for that.
Supervisor Demots?
I don't have any questions or anything. My children are still asking each other, are you enthusiastic? They had a wonderful time. So great, great job.
June 25th.
Supervisor Biggs?
Yeah, just thank you for all that you do.
Supervisor Benn?
Your social media, what do you do for social media?
Well, we all have Facebook pages and work with those. I'm of the generation that struggles with social media a little bit more. I think Kelly's much more in tune with that. So I do most of mine through Facebook. I don't know if you have Twitter or anything like that. But our teen club has an Instagram account. And so they're trying to bring me on board to do more of that kind of thing. But mostly Facebook and our website are the modes of communication.
And I love the fact that you're partnering with the Community Foundation and the New River Valley Health District. I think that's super fantastic. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions, just thank you.
Thank you.
I'll extend my thanks as well greatly. Appreciate you all coming tonight.
And our office is always open if you have anything for us.
Thank you.
Ladies? I don't believe that there is an addendum. Is that correct? And the next item is work session. Is there a motion to go into public address? Oh, thank you. I did say that there would be some bumps in the road with that. There's no one signed up for public address, but if there's anyone that would like to address the Board, you'll have five minutes. You'll just need to state your name and address. I don't see anyone coming forward. I did see the Chair scratch his nose. Is that a signal or? I'll go ahead and place a public address. And the next item is addendum, and there is none. And then the next item is work session. Is there a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're in work session.
Mr. Chair, the first item under, well, and the only item under work session this evening is an update on revenue estimates for the upcoming fiscal year. And I'll recognize our Budget Manager, Mark McGruder, for that. Angie's passing out the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. My name is Mark McGruder and I'm the county's budget manager. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about revenue projections going into fiscal year 19, if you can believe that. We'll talk a little bit about background, and then we have some new board members. So we'll talk about the background of our revenue categories. County revenue falls into two distinct categories, undesignated revenue and designated revenue. Undesignated revenue is unrestricted revenues, which means that they can be used by the Board for just about any purpose. Designated revenues, on the other hand, are restricted revenues, meaning that they're earmarked for a specific purpose and can only be used for that purpose. What you'll see here is I broke this down to give you a sort of an idea of how much revenue is in each individual category. And you can see the bulk of the county's revenue is undesignated revenue. It makes up 89% of the total revenue structure and is going to be the focus of this presentation this evening. As far as undesignated revenue is concerned, there are, as a general rule, there are three categories within undesignated revenue that drive the bulk of all revenues going forward as far as growth is concerned. And those are real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and sales and use taxes. Then the designated revenue piece, which is about 11% of the county's revenue structure. And some examples of that are compensation board revenue that supports constitutional officers, local user fees. Again, that's a smaller piece of the total revenue structure. I went back and I looked. Right now, the split is 89% undesigned and 11% designated. In 2008, which was about 11 years ago, the split was 80% 20%. In other words, 80% of our revenue was undesigned and 20% was designated. And what we've seen over the last 11 years is that designated revenue has been decreasing, mostly due to flat revenues from the state. And so I went back and I looked in 2008, the compensation board, which makes up the bulk of that designated revenue piece, was totaled $6 million. And in the fiscal year 19 budget, it's hovering right at $6 million. So there's been zero growth in that revenue over the last 11 years. And so as our local revenues are growing and the state's designated revenues are flat, you're seeing a shift as more revenue is becoming from the county's piece rather than from the state. Again, the state designated revenues remain flat, and that's required local dollars in addition to what we would normally have to provide in order to do those functions. Talk a little bit about our revenue pattern going forward. Our current growth pattern is slightly lower than prior years. Oops, that skipped. Let me go back. Sorry. Okay. Big picture. Right now, the county's estimated $1.7 million in new revenue growth for fiscal year 19. You can see a breakdown by individual category. Real estate's making up around $900,000. Personal property and motor vehicle is roughly $100,000. Business furniture and fixtures is $300,000. Other current property is $300,000. Delinquent taxes is actually in the hole by about $200,000. Sales taxes are in the hole, about $300,000. And interest is up half a million. And other undesigned revenue is up $100,000. So you're looking at $1.7 million in new revenue going forward. And as I was just saying, our growth pattern going into fiscal year 19 is slightly lower than in prior years. Normal growth in undesigned revenue is in the $2 million range per year. Issues that we're seeing for fiscal year 19 are less motor vehicle sales than normal. That's a national trend that is having an impact locally. I went back and looked at the national numbers. Nationally, motor vehicle sales are down 1.89%. Locally, for the first three quarters of 2017 compared to the first three quarters of 2016, the county was down 7.24%. Sales taxes are down from prior years. Currently, we're about a half a million dollars below the estimate in the current year. And that has a lot to do with some store closings. If you remember, JCPenney closed. And also, internet sales are having an impact. When people are buying things on the internet, there's no direct relationship that if you bought it in Montgomery County, that the sales tax comes back to us. So if you buy something, it's going to go to the state if you pay sales tax on it over the internet, and it's not necessarily coming to us. Delinquent taxes are lower than their normal trend. Based on our December collections, fiscal year 2018 revenues are tracking well to the current estimates that we have. The underperforming revenues that we just talked about are currently being offset by some surpluses in other categories. One of those is interest earnings that we're receiving on the county's deposits, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Okay, this next chart shows the county's revenue by individual category. Again, I'll just point out some of the key things here. You'll see real estate's up roughly $900,000. You see the increase in personal property and motor vehicles at $100,000. Normal growth pattern for that particular category would be in the $300,000 to $400,000 range. But again, those vehicle sales that we're seeing are not what we had seen in prior years. Also, this is the first year after we converted to proration to get our first estimate. Prior to proration, we were adding roughly $17 million a year in value to the personal property book, just in the motor vehicle category. Last year, we added $5 million. That is significantly lower than what we would have expected considering that we were going to proration. But you're seeing that dip, and the motor vehicle sales is having an impact on that. Again, delinquencies are down a little bit, roughly $200,000. On that page, you'll see the dip in local sales and use tax. Right now, if you look at the fiscal year 17 actual in local sales and use tax, we're right at $9 million. Our current estimate and trend for fiscal year 18 is actually lower than what we collected in fiscal year 17. So you're seeing, even with growth added in the fiscal year 19 budget, I'm still in the hole roughly $300,000 just in that one category. What's helping us going forward is we signed a new banking services agreement where we increased our interest rate from 50 basis points to 150 basis points on all deposits, over eight and a half million dollars. And so that's adding roughly a half a million dollars in new revenue into the next fiscal year. Again, total revenues, when all this is taken into consideration, right now- What's helping us going forward is we signed a new banking services agreement where we increased our interest rate from 50 basis points to 150 basis points on all deposits, over eight and a half million dollars. So that's adding roughly a half a million dollars in new revenue into the next fiscal year. Again, total revenues, when all this is taken into consideration, right now is $1.6, almost $1.7 million. Talk a little bit about the state budget. There wasn't a whole lot of activity in this year's state budget as far as we are concerned. According to the school staff, additional state funding for fiscal year 19 is roughly $847,000, and that's using ADM of $9,558. On the county side, the only additional state monies that we're receiving in fiscal year 19 are monies to annualize a 2% compensation board adjustment that was implemented in fiscal year 18, and that is $16,784. Okay, let's talk next steps. We're going to continue to analyze budget requests that we're receiving from departments. The presentation of the school budget by the superintendent, it will be on February 12. The presentation of the county's proposed fiscal year 19 budget by the county administrator will be on March 5. On March 18, we'll need to establish the tax rate and budget to advertise. We'll hold a public hearing on the tax rate and budget on April 5, and then hopefully, we'll be in a position to adopt the tax rate and budget on April 16. And with that, I will entertain any questions you may have. And I'll start off with Supervisor Fajekowski. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you for your work.
Supervisor Demoss?
A couple of questions. One, just to clarify for me, the governor's budget highlights slide, what is ADM?
Average daily membership.
See, I feel like I should have known that.
Of how many students you have.
I was reading it going, this should be something very simple to my brain, but no, I couldn't figure that one out. And then also, the... delinquent taxes. Why is collection of those slowed?
I don't have an honest answer on that. I think a lot of it has to do with the work that's being done in the treasurer's office, and I can't comment on that.
Okay.
But right now, last year, we collected 2.1, almost $2.2 million in that particular category. The trend that I'm looking at right now, I'm running like 1.8 for the year. We had a late payment in public service corporation revenue, which is roughly $700,000. That's going to actually roll into next fiscal year. And so you're going to see that category 2.6, but in reality, that $700,000 should have been paid in the prior year, and that was just a timing issue. So if you're really looking at that category, we're looking at 1.8. And so I lowered the estimate to $2 million, hoping that the additional growth that we're adding to the table will be enough to cover that.
Okay. And that was it. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, my only comment is, of course, you know, you have the governor's budget, but this isn't the final of what the General Assembly does and all that. So we're still sort of in limbo as far as knowing. I just like to remind people about that because, you know, it never sort of works out the way we think it's going to work out.
Supervisor Bennet?
A couple of questions. So if there's flat revenue for the compensation board at $6 million since 2008, approximately just simple addition of cost of living increases 16.9% over 10 years, okay, of $180 million is approximately $30 million. Is that math even remotely close to what we're short from the compensation board? No, can't be, right? If it was $6 million, 16% of $6 million is...bear with me. A million dollars short on the compensation board just because of cost of living. Do they keep up with, I mean, do we keep up on the compensation for constitutional officers with cost of living?
The compensation board for the county is just a revenue source. All constitutional officers are part of the county's pay plan, with the exception of the actual constitutional officer, okay? So essentially, each employee is part of our pay plan, so as our pay plan grows, those positions grow. What we have not seen at the state is, the only time that we get additional revenue is when the state has a state increase, which we did receive 2% in fiscal year 18. That 2% that I discussed was for an 11-month period over the year. So that's why you're seeing me annualize this. It's only $16,000, because that represents the additional one month for the entire year to annualize that. But as far as keeping pace, the county employees that are in those offices receive raises just as the county employees receive. I can't tell you how much money we've lost over the last 11 years by the state not increasing, but we have not seen them increase at the rate of inflation every single year. And so what we get is what the state provides whenever they have the ability to provide it. Going into the fiscal year 19 budget, there's no pay raises in there at all. There is an increase in fiscal year 20, but we'll have to see if, in fact, that rolls forward.
Makes it through.
So you said, I thought you said, in 2008, we got $6 million from the compensation board, and we still are getting $6 million from the compensation board.
That's correct.
So does that include all of the employees except for the officers that are elected?
The amount of money we receive is based on a formula, and so we get a certain amount of money in revenue by each office. And each office is slightly different as to how much revenue we receive. It's not 100%. There's some offices who only get a portion of the salary piece for those offices.
Craig, or you all probably know, for the county government, for income, for salaries, did we increase, you know, close to inflation, lagging inflation?
We tried to, we tried to keep up somewhat. We've, last year's was 2%. Is that, am I remembering right?
I think so.
I think it was, wasn't it 2% last year?
I guess, I guess, tell me if I'm just hearing this incorrectly, that if what we get from the state is flat, but inflation is 16.9% over the last 10 years, we have a gap of a million dollars that we've had to make up?
Well, that's absolutely correct. I mean, one of the charts that we include...
Just for these offices?
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't count for anything else?
One of the charts that we include each year in the budget presentation is to, that reflects the increasing difference between the total dollars it takes to maintain the five constitutional offices versus the state funding that we receive for those offices. And it's most pronounced in the treasurer and commissioner's office, but all of them are lagging.
And that doesn't even count schools?
No.
Right?
That's just the five constitutional offices.
Their salaries and keeping up with inflation or not keeping up with inflation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
Don't have any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor King?
No questions. Thank y'all for all your hard work.
I have a couple of questions and goes along the lines of what Supervisor Demoss asked about. Have, we had a tax sale of real estate recently. I was trying to remember, that has an effect when that is announced in the papers that you're doing tax sales because people won't pay their taxes? It is amazing how it sends a signal on folks. So when was the last year that we had a tax sale?
It's been a while.
Three years, four years?
It's been a long time.
And that is, the treasurer's office conducts that sale with your assistance?
Correct. Or if you remember, we were checking into getting outside councils to do that, and the treasurer elected not to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Did that. Does anyone else have any other questions?
When did the treasurer not want to do it?
It's been a couple of years.
Two years, maybe?
Okay.
I was thinking it's three.
So the last time was three or four years ago, and then?
There was a proposal about using Richmond Law Firm, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong. I was going to say it's been three years ago. That's, I...
At least.
And then I, for some reason, thought the sale actually maybe gone through, just reflecting on my memory. But the last tax sale that I went to, I was going to say maybe it was five or six years ago.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And did that spark any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so is there a motion to come out of work session?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Hold just one minute. So we had Todd King. Who was second?
I believe Supervisor Shepard was. Thank you all.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fajekowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're out of work session, and the next item is new business in regards to scheduling a public hearing for E3 polling place. Is there a motion?
So, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. And this is just to set the public hearing. Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
E3, is that the one in Squires?
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fajekowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next is home consortium agreement renewal. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fajekowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is First Amendment to Tower License Agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fajekowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up is county attorney report.
No report this time, Mr. Shepard.
And county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things this evening. First, I want to thank the board and the citizens for understanding and support over the last two weeks with the weather issues that we've had. We had one early closing and then a delay the next morning. Our first and foremost consideration is always safety for employees and also safety for citizens. The morning that we opened late, we had quite a bit of ice around the buildings, the public buildings, and we wanted to make sure those buildings were safe before citizens showed up to conduct business. So certainly appreciate the board's support and understanding when those events occur. Wanted to remind the board about the joint meeting with the Montgomery County School Board that'll be held next Monday at 6 o'clock, Vicki, is that correct?
I think 6:30.
6:30.
7:00 for the meeting.
And that, and we're hosting that here.
Yeah, thank you. That's correct. 6:30 and 7:00. Also, wanted to mention that before our next board meeting, several of us will be attending VACO Legislative Day on Thursday, February 8 in Richmond. Hopefully, we'll be able to see a couple of our elected officials and discuss some issues with them. Lastly, I wanted to pass out, you know, we try to keep an eye on builds that are coming down the pike during the session, and this was in the newspaper today. There've been a couple of builds introduced by Senator Hanger and Senator Obenchain up in the Shenandoah Valley related to Interstate 81. As you're aware, a number of us have had conversations with state folks, VDOT folks. I talked with the Secretary of Transportation last fall about concerns with Interstate 81. Just wanted to make you aware of these builds, and perhaps at the appropriate time, we may want to get a little more active in supporting them. We know that Interstate 81 is a challenge all through western Virginia, and we certainly want to encourage any opportunities to improve that situation that we can. But I just wanted to make you aware of those this evening. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Supervisor King?
The ones that's going to Richmond, take a copy of this and show them they haven't kept up with the inflation rate.
You hear?
Yeah. Ms. Mary, you make sure they see that.
Oh, they know all right. They know every year, but we'll do it again.
Just want to thank General Services and everybody who worked out in the snow and ice to try to keep everything clean. I do appreciate it. And want to pass something along to each one of you. Had a DSS meeting this morning, and I passed along to the secretary down there. When I first got on the board, we used to get copies. If I was at DSS, everybody, the members of the board would get a copy of our minutes. I would like to see if we couldn't get back into that. And I asked them down there this morning if they would send each of y'all a copy of each month of our minutes and all. And that way, we can all keep up to what's going on in each. And I would appreciate that.
And Supervisor King, I'll offer this as well. We have a couple of boards and commissions that send the minutes to county administrator's office, and then we make sure we get them in your Friday report. So I'll mention that as well, but absolutely.
All right, I appreciate that. And I'd like to thank Neil, and there are several other employees that have stepped it up since. We're a little low on employees here at the county. Several of them have stepped up and carried a lot more on their wagon than what they're used to, but I would like to say how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more thing. Oyster and turkey supper the first Saturday of February.
Do you know anybody that has tickets? Do you know anybody that has tickets?
I don't know. Nobody up here is going to buy none.
I've got a couple items that I wanted to bring up since our last meeting. The first one is, I had my first meeting at the Solid Waste Authority, and they are wanting to extend the user agreement. When the authority was originally formed, it was good for 30 years, and if I remember correctly, I believe there's seven years left on it. So they thought this would be a good time to maybe extend that out to, so it doesn't sneak up on us too quickly. They also throw around the idea of staggering the appointments on the board, kind of like what we have now, where not every board member is elected at the same time. Currently, all board members will, the terms will expire at, I believe, June. So they want to just stagger that out. But that's just giving us a heads up on that, and I'm sure more will be coming out on that. The second item was something I discussed with Craig this past week. I've been getting some citizen complaints on the upcoming demise of the trash train. It's apparently going to go away and be replaced by a barrage of trucks hauling garbage to Roanoke County's Roanoke's landfill in Smith Gap. One of the things that I appreciate, I appreciate that they're building their own road so that they won't have to use Route 603, because that would definitely destroy a beautiful section of our county with trash blowing off of trucks. But the thing that bothers me is that they are going to be, the route they're going to take is going to send them over a bridge that VDOT doesn't claim and therefore has not been inspected. And I just, I can see that if something were to happen, I don't know who would be held liable for that. And I just, I intend on looking into it a lot more and trying to find out, get some answers. So it's too bad David Clark wasn't here. He could help us out, but those are the only two things I had.
Thank you. Thank you. And Supervisor Demott? Am I right?
Nope.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay. First, I wanted to thank the staff for our extended work session that we had on Friday and Saturday. I think it was very beneficial. I know that staff put a lot of time into organizing that. And I'm gonna...I was going to bring up the heavy truck thing, but I understand Chris is going to bring it up under his report, but I'm very supportive of not dealing with any heavy trucks on 81. The third thing is, I didn't know if you all wanted a copy of when I attended the Governor-Elect Norfan at the Times Transition Policy Council on Local Government. We discussed areas of concern, and we had issues, and we made recommendations. And so the final report has come out. And just so you know, like, what areas were discussed, we discussed state and local tax reform and unfunded mandates, K-12 public education issues. Of course, that went on for a while. Seven-page report. Review of local government authority, including local land use planning, health and human services, including the provision of local mental health and substance abuse services, infrastructure, public works, transportation, and broadband access, and economic development and revitalization. And so if you want a copy, I can actually email you all the copy if you all are interested. And Craig, I don't know if you're interested, but a lot of work went into it. There were a lot of local leaders from across the state, and we divided into groups, and then we went around and gave all the input. So...and then at the time, Governor-elect came in, and we...he went around to the different groups, and so he was very aware of what was going on. So the report is finished. So do you all want a copy, then?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, and that's all I have.
Supervisor Brown?
I was notified by a citizen on Bishop Road, said that a lot of people are speeding out there, and asked for the sheriff's office to kind of keep an eye on it, as well as VDOT do a study. I just wanted to make sure that that was okay, or so that'll be happening.
And as I shared with Supervisor Brown when we discussed that, the board can...a board member can request a speed study for a certain road, so unless anybody has a concern about that, I mean, it doesn't need a vote, we'll pass that on to Dave Clark and VDOT and ask them to follow up with that.
Perfect.
Be glad to do that.
Yes, please. I'd like to spotlight a local business in District A. Point West Management is a locally-owned property management company located downtown Blacksburg, specializing in providing exceptional service and quality rental properties throughout Blacksburg and Christiansburg. Erin Kirby, the owner of Point West Management, has 20 years of experience in property management and real estate, and has earned the designation of Certified Property Management by the National Institute of Real Estate Management. Currently, Point West manages 350 residential properties comprised not only of student housing, but corporate and professional housing as well. They also manage approximately 300,000 square feet of commercial retail and office space, including Kent Square and downtown Blacksburg. Erin's a super great leader. She won, I think, Woman of the Year in the Chamber recently. She's just a shining star in the business world. Thank you, Erin. I also want to make an announcement for the Super Bowl throwdown that is being put on by Ferguson and the Ewing Cabinet Company. Basically, on February 1st, which is a Thursday, 5:00 to 7:30 at Ferguson, we've got the Blacksburg Country Club, Holiday Inn Christiansburg, PKs, Preston's at the River Course, The Farmhouse, Tots, and tie this express, making soup. We all get to taste it for free. You're welcome to bring personal care items, blankets, pillows, canned goods, supporting the women. So it's all for the Women's Resource Center. They've raised thousands of dollars in the past for other charities, and I would highly encourage you to attend. It's a pretty great event, so thank you. The last couple of things is thank you to the General Services and to the Sheriff's Fire and Rescue for all the work that you do in the horrible weather that we get. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard?
I don't have any report.
Supervisor Demott?
Just a short report. Speaking of the roads and all of the hard work that goes on to clear the roads, I had a few people reach out to me with the last school closures, and I just wanted to remind anybody that's watching that when Montgomery County Public Schools is closed, it's because the roads are not safe. There are two town locations, Blacksburg and Christiansburg, that have their own departments to maintain the roads, and then the rest of the roads throughout the county need to be maintained as well. They don't have the benefit of having a town also maintain them on top of VDOT. So I just wanted to remind people to be patient. I'm sure when those decisions are made, they're not made lightly, and they're made for the safety of the students. So please just consider the more rural parts of Montgomery County when you're hearing about school closures.
Thank you.
That's it.
I've got a few things as well. One, coming out of the work session, there were a few things that I think fell on me as chair, and I know the staff is going to be reaching out to both towns, but I went ahead and contacted both town mayors. I had a very good conversation with Leslie Hager-Smith. She was very excited about the idea that we came up with about having, hopefully, being able to have a meal at one of the high schools and allowing the culinary. I know there's some details to work out there. She was also...is going to invite Mr. Demott and I to address the town council, similar to what I've been doing to Christiansburg Town Council. Mike Barber, and speaking with him, was very excited about the same proposal with the town, and had said that some of his town council members were saying, "When can we get together with board supervisors?" So it sounds like that we're all on the same page and moving forward with establishing those relationships. And I told them that the staff would be working out all the details. Also, today, and I believe Supervisor Fitchakowski and myself were contacted, one because he's on the NPO, in regards to House Bill...our Senate Bill 504 and House 1276. And basically, on the federal level, they are asking to experiment with 10 states about increasing the truckload from 80,000 pounds to 91,000 pounds. And these bills would allow Virginia to be a part of that experiment. In speaking with them, and frankly, I was talking with someone who was coming from a viewpoint of rail and how it might affect rail, but they were also pointing out how it might affect our citizens. One, the safety aspect, and we're not in a flat area, and so when you put another 11,000 pounds in a truck, it's going to be harder to stop when it's going down Christiansburg Mountain or Arata. In addition to that aspect of things, the trucking industry's point is, well, by having heavier trucks and being able to put more in the trucks, there's going to be fewer. From the rail industry's perspective, what is going to take place is the trucking industry then will be able to compete with heavier loads. And so instead of having fewer trucks on 81, we'll actually have more trucks on 81 and less train traffic, which trains are more economical, better for the environment than tractor-trailers. This is something, as Ms. Biggs brought up...has brought up previously, but this bill may be acted on next week before we go to the legislative and have our lobbying session with them on the 8th. And so what I guess I was looking for is a letter that we could send, but also what they were encouraging us to do is contact our delegates, contact our senators, and say, "This isn't the right thing." In addition to the safety aspect of it, the fee right now that's being proposed is roughly $150 per year per truck to be able to carry an additional 11,000 pounds. So as you can imagine, 11,000 pounds is going to be more wear and tear on the roads, and our roads were designed to carry 80,000-pound trucks, not 91. So I guess, one, I think it's much more effective if our whole board gets behind something. But I would also encourage members to reach out to our House of Delegates and Senate members if this is something they feel strongly about. So...
Could we send a letter from the board to all of our representatives? We did that last year, because this came up last year, and VACO is also opposed to this kind of thing. So I think if it was consensus, we could send it from the whole board.
Is there...all right. And so I'll ask the staff to draft something, and then...
Can we definitely address infrastructure in the letter? Like, just make sure that there's something in there about, I'm thinking, bridges and the roadways not being equipped to handle it, and...and you don't have to include all of this in the letter, but, you know, infrastructure projects are not funded appropriately to begin with, and so if we add more tonnage to the infrastructure, we really could face some significant problems, especially in our mountainous county.
And they have to be able to get to the interstate, and so that means that 91,000 pound truck is going to be going there. So...
I particularly like the percentages, meaning, like, the trucks only fund 70% now, but if it goes up to 91,000, it'll drop to funding 55% or something, whatever that was, which is a huge amount of wear and tear that won't be funded, won't be paid to be repaired, so...
I also am going to be requesting a speed study. I had the citizens contact me about Walton Road. There are parts of Walton Road that are 35, and then there are parts of Walton Road that is 55 because it's unmarked, and so if I'd like to...if there's no opposition to do a speed study. Thank y'all. See a thumbs up? Is there...does that cause anyone else to have anything else before the board?
Are we going to do Sarah's speed study, too?
Yeah.
I thought it was thumbs up.
Thank you.
I didn't see thumbs, but I saw it.
Okay. All right. I apologize.
I didn't want to forget her.
Thank you, Todd.
Anything else? And thank you. Well, this meeting is adjourned.